Welcome to this meeting door, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh before we go through approval of agenda, we've had some requests to move. The one is to move the student board rep interviews to the front. Due to the FFA banquet as well as moving. Um addressing the board up to the front. And we've also got an amendment to discussion item I, the school building reports. It's gonna be Keen River, we're gonna switch that to the athletic department. So my question is, uh what order do we want? Board interview or board rep interviews and addressing the board.
You wanna inquire how many people are going to address the board?
Yeah, looks like four. We could actually go through informational items first. And then go into executive session. Just to keep it as close to saying as we can.
My suggestion would be to do. The interviews so the students can get to their next event and then.
Yes, we do. Okay, so we're going to move. Uh student board interviews to item B, information items, or I'm sorry. Item F, addressing the board, or G, uh will be moved to C. And item P will be moved to.
And then everything else gets moved down one letter. What's D, sorry?
Is executive.
Oh, still D, okay.
Or I'm sorry, did you say B or D?
D, yeah, no, I got it.
Okay. And then, so there's been a motion in a second to approve the agenda. Those same sign, motion carries, so we'll proceed with board rep interviews. Move Blake, can we get the? The mic moved up to the table thing? Not sure you have a, you have some questions? Um I'll start with the first one, we'll just go down the line and just keep going to our. Okay, first up. Step to the table and introduce yourself.
My name's Kami Duncan and I'm in, I'm a junior right now going to my senior year.
Amy, what motivated you to apply for the role of student board rep?
What motivated me is I wanna be a part where students can come and talk to me and I can bring up those issues here and hopefully get them. Not, if not changed, then help in those situations.
How do you think your unique perspective as a high schooler will benefit the board?
Well, I think my personality can bring, what can affect the board because. Can you repeat the question, please?
How do you think your unique perspective as a high schooler will benefit the board?
Well, I am. As a high schooler, they're more wel- welcome to come talk to me than an adult like you guys. So I can get those questions through to you guys easier than them coming and talk to you.
Yeah, I mean, if, if a fellow student or community member approached you with a concern related to the school. How would you handle the situation and ensure their voice is heard by the board?
How I would handle it is. Probably write it down somewhere so I remember what their concern was. And then come here and just tell you guys, talk about it and that's really it.
All right, Kami, can you tell us about your current extracurricular, extracurricular activities? And how you plan to manage your time to attend board meetings regularly while balancing your other commitments?
So I'm very active in sports and PHS, I do soccer and I run track. I'm also in leadership and link crew, so that's a lot on my plate right now. But with this commitment, this will obviously come first, so my track meets and my games, they're not on the same days that we have board meetings. So I will put this first before anything else.
Kami, as a student representative, how do you plan to gather feedback from your classmates and other stakeholders to inform the board? About the needs and concerns of students?
In leadership, we have a time where we just go around and talk about what we think the school can change and what we can do about it. During that time, I can take in information and come and tell you guys. And also if any student comes up and wants to talk to me about anything, I'll welcome them to do that too, I'll tell you guys about it.
Kami, uh collaboration and communication are important aspect of this role. How do you intend to work with school administrators and district leaders to address issues before they reach the board?
We have a really good counselor, counselor system and principal, vice principal. I can always come and talk to them first before I come to the, talk to the board and see if anything can get um solved before I come here. No, not really.
Kami, do you have any questions or do you have any questions you have for us about the role of student representative on the board?
No, I don't. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Carrie.
Kami.
What motivated you to apply for the role of student representative to the professor's school?
I think I did a pretty good job last year bringing concerns to uh Kim and other school administrators. So I wanna continue doing that.
Yashimi, how do you think your unique perspective as a high schooler will benefit the board?
I think it's you guys' job, you know, to benefit the students. So I think having someone younger or closer to uh the kids' age. Uh to be able to talk to them and listen to their concerns is a less intimidating rather than talking to an adult if they are like afraid of adults. Maybe in some situations.
Yashimi, if a fellow student or community member approached you with a concern related to the school. How would you handle the situation and ensure their voice is heard by the board?
Well, I would first um, I would first evaluate the situation or concern. And um try to see if it's something that really needs to come up or be brought up at the board meeting. And then I would probably ask him about it before, like say, hey, do you think I should bring this up at the board meeting? Or maybe take it to a study session and then I would talk about it.
Yashimi, can you tell us about your current extracurricular activities? Now you plan to manage your time to attend board meetings regularly while balancing your other commitments?
Oh my gosh, excuse me, um well, I have a lot of other commitments. I have, I'm a senior drum major for band, I'm in NHS, I am the executive um business manager for ASB. And I do wrestling and tennis and I'm probably gonna do um cross-country this fall. And then I also work at the pool during summer, so I do have a lot of commitments. But, oh, and I do rain, sorry, but I think this is like, it takes a little time out of my day and like. Um I'm always thinking about, okay, well, could this improve the school? Like as a student representative, I'm like, okay, could this improve the school? Could this, it doesn't take too much like actual time out of my day, I'm just always constantly like thinking about things that I could bring up.
Thank you.
As a student representative, how do you plan to gather feedback from your classmates and other stakeholders to inform the board about the needs and concerns of students?
I was actually thinking about this like recently. I think we need to probably have better community outreach as student representatives. And I don't think many people even knew I was a student representative this year. So I think I need to put myself like out there more and be like, oh, hey, if you have any concerns, like let me know, I'm a student representative, I can bring it up. So probably just say that more.
The collaboration and communication are important aspects of this role. How do you intend to work with school administrators and district leaders to address issues before they reach the board?
Um I actually had a kind of a run-in with some uh employees like cussing around students recently. And I brought that to Mr. Bailey before I even told the board about it, I didn't even tell you guys about it. And we were able to get it solved pretty quickly, so, or I think so, well, I told him about it, so I hope he solved it. And so I plan on working pretty closely to Mr. Bailey and Mr. Funk when I need to. I'm very opinionated and when I need to talk, I'll speak up for anyone and anything that I think is right.
Yashimi, do you have any questions for us about the role of student representative on the board? Thank you. Next up is Alex- Alexander.
Not many people can do that.
Alright, Alexander, what motivated you to apply for the role of student representative to the professor's school?
I wanted to be able to give back to the community that helped create this wonderful school. And ha- allowed me to get this amazing education that I am today uh having. So I decide, I uh decided I wanted to be able to give back in some way that I could.
How do you think your unique perspective as a high schooler will benefit the board?
I believe that many of the board members do not uh uh go to the school during school hours that often. And uh because I am a student and that I'm at the school during school hours, I am able to see things that uh. You may not be able to see because of not being there during the hours and only seeing what happened after. Uh so I say that I can give a unique perspective of what's happening within the school of, yeah.
Alex, if, if a fellow student or community member approached you with a concern related to the school. How would you handle the situation and ensure that their voice is heard by the board?
I would take the uh uh, the concern uh very seriously. I would look into the uh concern to see what I could do as a like representative. And I would uh act on whatever I could do um. Uh and after I can no longer do as much as I can, I would bring it up to um anyone that I could. That could also help uh with dealing with the concern that the community member had.
Alex, can you tell us about your current extracurricular activities? Now you plan to manage your time to attend board meetings regularly while balancing your other commitments?
I have been a stage manager for Drama Club for the past three years. Um how I plan to deal with that time is that uh next year I'll be having a assistant stage manager. That I will be training to be able to replace me after I graduate. And so when times for Drama Club and uh uh any um. Meetings uh co- have a conflict of time, I will uh have the assistant uh take over for me. It'll be both uh great for the assistant for having actual experience. And having their skills grow within Drama Club while also giving me more liberties to do stuff outside of it. Uh as well for SWAT, um most of, I think all of the SWAT time is uh always outside of like times. That the board meets and so I will always not have a conflict with SWAT and uh the board. Um and I think uh, oh, uh leadership and NHS things happen during school. So I don't think those will uh, that will have any problems as well as uh unified Mustangs. Which I am a part of.
Thank you.
As a student representative, how do you plan to gather feedback from your classmates and other stakeholders? To inform the board about the needs and concerns of students?
I was planning on using the uh bulletin that we have that gets shown like during Mustang period to all the students. Which would just be like, the students could type in a URL or scan a QR code and send in like an anonymous like. Uh form where they could uh like si- uh say any concerns that they have. And uh so that we could have it that uh students who might be scared to say anything. Uh could have a anonymous safe place for them to be able to inform us about any problems.
Alexander, uh collaboration and communication are important aspects of this role. How do you intend to work with school administrators and district leaders to address issues before they reach the board?
I would uh, I would do that by uh scheduling in-person like uh. One-on-one talks with like officials that I need to talk with. If I can't like get one-on-one talks, a series of just emails back and forth between. Me and the official about like things that need to be done. Um and if hopefully uh any problems that can be solved that way will be solved that way. Before needing to uh clutter your schedules with business that probably won't need to be within the meetings. I am very glad that the board allows uh students to have a representative to give such uh their insight. I am just very proud of this community.
Do you have any questions for us about the role of student representatives on the board?
Uh not right now, I, I think. Thank you.
So if someday you have other commitments, um we're going to executive session, it might be another thirty or forty minutes. But we'll get through with all that, so if you need to leave, you're, you're more than welcome to and we'll get back to you. So thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh now we'll move on to um addressing the board. You may present a concern to the board during the time reserved for carrying public comment. This is the case, we ask that you prior to the start of the meeting sign in noting the topic you intend to address to the board. Come to the microphone and state your name, do not reflect adversely on the political or economic view, ethnic background, character. Or motives of any individual, do keep your comments concise, non-emotional, brief. The board is interested in hearing your concerns and if there's compliments to, it's best to call the superintendent's office. A couple of days before the meeting, if this isn't possible, you can ask the board president to recognize you to the section. And we'll do it for three minutes, preferably for a total of twenty minutes, alright? First up is. Sandra? Sandra, okay. So you know, uh there'll be a ten-second countdown on here, I'll go beep, 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 just keep talking through that second beep uh and then your time's up.
Hi, my name is Sandra Enriquez, I am part of the migrant program. I wanted to come today and just wanted to know if I can be inclusive, participate and collaborate in well-being of our children. As there has been different posts that maybe make me uncomfortable and make other people. In the Hispanic community um and I just had a simple question. Why was it necessary to make changes and why were parents not included in the planning of these decisions? Ya digo buenas tardes? Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Ana.
So we are the representatives of the program PAC? With all due respect, we have these questions for you guys. So what is the plan to continue the services for our kids in the PAC program?
Dijo que a veces no contestan las preguntas porque nos parte de la junta pero van a agarrar todas las respuestas y te van a dejar saber.
And if we are able to have a session with the board to um see what is our plan, our discussion. Of what's going on and how is the migrant program being affected? Because as the community, we wanna be a part of this, we're, we're here to stay, we're here to be a part. We don't wanna be left out.
From what they're asking and I did explain to her that it's not gonna be right away that you guys will get back to her.
Ah buenos tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Carlos Padilla y soy miembro de la mesa de, el programa migrante.
My name is Carlos Padilla and I'm the member of the migrant.
Y una de las razones por las que estoy aquí es a, soy padre de dos estudiantes.
The reason why I'm here is because I'm a parent of two students.
Uno de la middle school and uno de la high school.
One in the middle school, one at the high school. My best interest is so that way they can get far in life.
Que sean personas que sumen a la comunidad.
So it could be um persons who can give to the community when they get older.
Ay, que tengan un futuro brillante y el que ellos quieran. Las metas que quieran lograr. Y tenía una pregunta. Nos dimos cuenta de que en un año va a desaparecer la posición que tiene el señor Eric.
So we just found out that within a year, the position of Mr. Larez is gonna be gone.
Y quería saber qué va a suceder después que pase ese año.
So he wants to know what's gonna happen after that year is finished with the program.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Benjamin.
Good afternoon, my name is Benjamin.
Mucho con, mucho gusto en conocerlos y estar en este día con ustedes. Y tengo unas preguntas también, verdad?
I have some questions.
Queremos tener la seguridad de que los padres serán incluidos en el proceso de planificación y toma de decisiones antes de que se realicen cambios como este. Como el cambio acerca de Eric.
So they wanna be able to have the security and have the parents involved in the change of Mr. Larez, so they know what's going on.
Por la razón de que nosotros como padres creo tenemos el derecho a saber qué es lo que está pasando con los cambios del programa, verdad? Que nos ha ayudado mucho con nuestros hijos.
SS parents should have the right to know what's going on with the program because it helps us a lot with our children.
Y, y yo humildemente les pido, verdad, que me den una respuesta, la razón por qué se va a mover Eric. Eric a, a través de diez años ha hecho muy buen trabajo y nos ha ayudado a la comunidad del programa migrante, verdad?
They're um, he's asking um to get a response to be able to know what's going on and why they're changing him after ten years of being in the program. That he's helped a lot in the community.
Y a mí me gustaría que, que dejaran en la posición a Eric porque él nos ha apoyado mucho.
I would like it if you would leave him in the position because he's helped us a lot.
Y yo nomás quería saber, decir que yo tengo hijos.
I just wanna let you know that I have kids.
Y en el programa nos han ayudado mucho con la información de cómo mejorar, cómo buscar becas.
And the program, they've helped us a lot on how to find scholarships for our kids and how to make them better.
Entonces yo quisiera que ustedes entendieran.
I would like for you guys.
Que yo tengo hijos y creo que ustedes también deben de entender un poco lo que estamos haciendo. Por los beneficios de nuestros hijos.
For the benefit of our kids.
Eso nomás, quisiera que tuvieran un poquito de conciencia. Estamos peleando por nuestros hijos, no por, no por la razón de los padres, por nuestros hijos. Estamos peleando por nuestros hijos, no por, no por la razón de los padres, por nuestros hijos.
So that way you guys keep that in mind that they're fighting for the children and the benefits for the children, not for the adults, but for the children.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. That includes this portion. Now we will. Informational items, right? Move on to information. First up is a big thank you for our current student program. You know, coming out without trip on the floor. Right, first up is Caitlin. Thank you for being a part of it, you did a great job, appreciate that going forward.
Thank you.
I have Noah. Graduation. I need to take your group picture. Can we have the board members, there's five of you and then we have three student reps in front and I can take a picture. Sorry.
Okay, you got to stand in front. Michelle, get in there. Let's see. Okay, there we go. I'm going to try one up here. Okay, I can do a little.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is Deca, Deca Travel.
Well, hi, I'm Julia and I'm in the book. We came back to give you guys a report on our ICDC Nationals trip from DECA. So we did a couple, few weeks ago. Um, so we started off on Friday when we left and we, um, were able to go to Disneyland for a little bit, so we had that for a couple of hours.
Um, after that, we did have to leave shortly though for opening session, opening session was a lot like state, they got us really pumped and ready and excited for our competition. Um, and we got to hear from our, um, the Washington DECA, like their, their own executive team, yeah, they got to talk to us and they just, they just got us really excited and I always liked that about that. About how they did that all throughout, from bootcamp all the way up to internationals.
Um, Saturday was a full another Disney day, um, it was really fun, so we got to, um, just go to Disney, see some other DECA people, get to, um, socialize with them as we saw them around the park. And then on Sunday, we had our Academy Day, which was going into a classroom based off of our, um, project, which was the SPE. And we were able to communicate with other schools on new ideas and inform us about other stuff that we can do for our SBE from what they do at their school as well.
Um, as well as during our academy, we got to hear. Oh, it's a student-based enterprise, it's about, it's a paper by, based off our student store here that we work during lunch.
Um, procedures and just how we run the store.
Yeah, it was just basically like the, the background of it, the inner workings, the management, the products we serve and why we do what we do and how it benefits our students. But, um, at the academy, we also did get to hear from three guest speakers, three panelists. Uh, one was a guy who designs shoes for Nike, another one was an executive manager, I think, or marketer for Raising Canes. And there was a third one, but I'm blanking on what he did, but I think he was also another marketer, a lot about, a lot of, uh, student-based enterprises is marketing so that you can outreach to students, so I thought it was really cool that all three of them kind of had that in common because they were, uh, little, talking to us the whole time and basically giving us more information. And at the end of every time they were done speaking, we were able to go up to them to ask questions.
So we were able to get a one-on-one experience with, um, bigger, people who have a bigger, um, placement, I guess, and bigger companies. To be able to have one-on-one conversations with them, which was really nice. And as well as after our academy, we were, um, we received our plaque, which was the gold medal for our SB project. As we were at the academy, we also were able to trade pins with other states, so that got us to socialize with people from out of Washington. Um, we did, we put them on our lanyards, so there's different pins based off of different, um, states, so every state got their own pin, so.
It was also cool to talk with these other students as well because we got to learn what they do in their student-based enterprises and how we differ. And maybe we could implement some of their new ideas, maybe something that works for them could work for us as well. Um, the next day on Monday, that was our competition day at once. And it was a little nerve-wracking just to see a lot of other schools, but it was also very, I feel like welcoming because you could tell everyone was just as nervous as you were. And so you found a little bit of comfort in that, but it didn't take very long to present, I don't think, but we did do our competition, we walked in there going with our head held high, walking out, back out with our head held high. And then afterwards, we got to go to Universal as well with, uh, other DECA kids.
Um, on Tuesday, we received the news that we didn't make it to finals, um, so that gave us more free time to go to the, the beach.
Lift up our spear. And then on Wednesday, we were unable to make it to closing session just because, uh, we had to fly back up.
That was our trip and what we got to experience for going to National.
Is there a- anything that you'll bring back that you'll implement?
Uh, yeah, so we got to, when we were talking with them at the academy, we were able to see like different positives or, what is it, like, um, positives to our student store and some, uh, negatives to like other people's student stores or to ours as well. So one thing that they did is for, like, the workers, for the student workers at the student store, they did this, like, how do you, how do you explain it?
The point system?
The point system.
Yeah, so basically to encourage more students to work in the student store and to continue working in the student store. They basically paid them kind of with points that they could go back and in return, use those points to purchase something from the store. Just to keep up their motivation and just to keep them more interactive.
Um, some other things were like spirit weeks, some, that was an idea that one of the schools gave us, so they did like Mario Week and they would just have specials those weeks to get more people into the store and more excited to purchase from the store. So those were some things that we are planning on implementing this next year.
Is staffing your biggest issue?
Hmm, not necessarily, no, uh, the kids do work the store, I think, uh, it's only about five of us that have to work each shift. Um, but one thing though, they did, uh, talk about that we did hear from other schools is how they keep track of the kids who are working each day and if they don't show up. And they have like, basically like old like punch-in, punch-out cards just to see when someone shows up. And I feel like we could do something like that, but more modern so that we devise a plan for if and when a student doesn't show up for their, their shift in the store.
Nice.
How long is this tool? Like, what are the hours that it's open?
It's only open during lunch. Which some other schools, that's like, we got to see that some other schools didn't have that advantage of opening during lunch, they would have to do it before or after lunch due to their lunch services. So that's one advantage that we have, that we were able to see.
Oh, the cookies, yeah, we always sell out of cookies.
It's like the first thing, some kids come and buy like twenty at once, yeah, they just give them out and they don't eat them all.
Still bacon, the whole baked one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was going to ask if they sell cookie dough too. Oh. I just remember in my high school store, they sold cookies, but you could buy the dough too, and that was even hotter, hotter of a seller. Maybe we'll have to look. Then you don't have to cook them.
Next up is graduation.
Thank you for yet another opportunity to speak to you guys. Um, giving you a couple of different pieces of paper here, uh, handed a lot of this out to the staff, so you're seeing the same thing that the staff has. Uh, I believe the first page for you is the graduation order of events, you may not, uh, hasn't really changed much, I try to keep that the same good year. Uh, but that is it, we did, uh, go over this today, I had my luncheon with my top ten, which is the top eleven this year. Um, and a lot of those members have speaking roles or roles in the graduation ceremony itself, so I've been able to fill a lot of these in. Uh, where you see just a general senior officer, those have now been filled in. There are a couple of areas that I'm still working on filling, um, including number eight, the introduction for our tassel turn. We do have our person that will be doing the tassel turning and adding all this to the official program, which will be, um, handed out at graduation as well as an online program. Uh, so that's the first page, I think the second page is this page, just to give you guys an idea on timelines of, of our staff. Um, that gives you a good idea of when things will start for us, for those of you who are going to be attending. I believe we've heard back from everybody, all board members except for one, and that may have actually happened today. I'm not quite sure, um, haven't had a chance to speak with my secretary about that one yet. Uh, the other ones, uh, you have the last week of school for nine through, through eleven and graduation week for seniors, that outlines uh, the other dates, I would pay closer attention to the graduation week for seniors. That would give you a better idea as to the events that are, that are taking place for them. We try to keep all of our events at about six o'clock, uh, starting at six o'clock. You can see Monday, June third, uh, scholarship night at the auditorium here at PHS. Um, begin checkout on Tuesday, Wednesday, we have, uh, baccalaureate outside of school. Thursday is the practice and all things graduation and moving up assembly. If any of you would like to come, I strongly encourage you to come to that, it's kind of a fun one, we, we celebrate our students, celebrate our seniors in front of their peers and, um, and get a couple of practice runs in for graduation. Uh, we take great pride in our, our graduation ceremony and, uh, fast and furious run-through. Uh, and we try to do two or three run-throughs on that morning, uh, Thursday morning. And then, uh, bring them all back on Saturday and, and run through it, so.
Is that here in the school?
That is here in the school, um, the, the moving up assembly is in the main gym.
Do you have a time?
Uh, nine forty-four, I thought that was on there, but I may have missed it. I apologize if it's not. Okay. And then the other two, yes, I have moving up assembly schedule and our Wednesday alternate schedule, which applies more to nine through eleven. Um, Wednesday is the day that we are checking everybody out, it's a little bit different, uh, we had to change our schedules this year because usually we come, we have some days where we come back, this year we do not have that. So Friday is a half day, so it kind of pushed everything earlier in the week on checkout process. Um, and, uh, had to recreate a bunch of schedules, so take a look at the schedules, um, again, moving up assembly, um, I think I put the right dates on your guys', you should have June fifth and sixth at the top. Is that what you guys just say?
Yep.
Okay, perfect, it's nine or one, um, June fifth and sixth, so, uh, those are also posted to the website and, uh, just, yeah, top, last two, uh, last two pages should show the schedules, so. Any questions for me? Yes, we will be streaming our scholarship night and we will be streaming graduation ceremony on Saturday. Uh, graduation cer- ceremony on Saturday is streamed through NFHS, uh, which is what we use for athletics as well, so unfortunately you do have to pay for that. Um, unless you've subscribed to that in the past, I can't remember exactly how that one works, and I'll talk to Jackson about that if we can. You know, sometimes they offer that one for free, so, and then I'll talk to Jackson about that and see if we can, we can work that. We'll make that, so we can make that one for free, so.
How many are we graduating this year?
Um, that's still to be determined, we're working all the way up until the end to try and get it through. So we have a list, um, I do have a, a short list of kids that are in the red zone. Uh, but we are very hopeful that we will make, get as many of those to green as possible, so I don't want to give you a number just yet. Oh, we're growing, let me tell you that, we are, we are growing and improving, so, um, I'm very optimistic about our numbers this year and, and hope to be really pushing, pushing a high number, so.
How about the sound?
Sound, I've ordered, uh, new equipment, actually, I budgeted money this year and ordered new sound equipment, um, I have the maintenance department is checking on the outlets down there, we're trying to problem solve every area that could possibly have led to the sound being out last year. Um, so I chose to use building budget on, uh, some sound that would be used at graduation and events as well as portable. So we can use them at other events, including baseball, softball, soccer and travel that around, that was one of my goals, so it wasn't just confined to one area. Uh, we're able to use that as a portable unit, so, um, I've worked with Ted Brown Music and all of that is ordered and on a rush to get here and they will train us and, and upgrade our system. Uh, should also include, um, speaker systems and headphones for our officials at the stadium, so officials will now be mic'd and, uh, and work through that as well, so not just for graduation, but for other areas of our, our high school.
Any other questions? Thanks, Brian.
Yep, it's Brian.
Up is, it's administrative directors appreciation.
So I know this is kind of a condemned, you might say, but we do have to make sure we honor all of our staff and all of our employees. And so this time I have to get to read two letters. The first one is, um, our directors, and many people don't know all of the people in our, what most businesses would call management team, right?
We in education call them directors, so it says, Dear Prosser School District Administrative Directors, I'm writing to express my deepest gratitude for your outstanding contributions and unwavering dedication to our district's mission. Each of you plays an indispensable role in our collective pursuit of excellence, whether it's, um, being overseeing our programs or any other pieces, your tireless commitment to excellence shines through in every aspect of your work and some of them are here tonight. I'm continually inspired by their passion and dedication. Um, I'd like to extend a heartfelt thank be, to each of them individually, Athletic Director Jackson Hawk, C T Director Rick Follett, Food Services Director Darlene Morrow, Special Services Director Nikki Swanson, Director of Behavioral Services Cindy Parish Dean, Director of Business and Operations Delise Weddle, Director of Migrant and Bilingual Services Eric LaRaz, Maintenance Director Andy Howe, Technology Director Sean Cook, and Transportation Director Almy Cook. Your collective efforts contribute to the landscape of our district, fostering an environment where every student has the opportunity to thrive and succeed. Your passion for education and dedication to student well-being serves as a beacon of inspiration for us all, reminding us of the impact that our work has on the lives of those we serve, we even heard about that in public comment tonight. As we reflect on the wins and challenges of the past year, I'm continually impressed by your resilience and commitment to our shared mission. Your dedication has helped shape our district into a place where every individual can flourish regardless of their background or circumstances. On behalf of the entire district, I want to express my deepest appreciation for your exceptional service, your contributions are invaluable. And I'm very proud to have each of you as part of our team. Thank you for your commitment to our student success, together we will continue to make a positive difference in the lives of those we serve.
Thank you.
And we have one for our nurses.
Yes.
Um, and so I'm just gonna keep on reading, so those who are listening in public, um, we have two amazing school district nurses, it says. As Superintendent Prosser School District, I'm writing to express my sincere appreciation for your exceptional dedication and service as school nurses. In the midst of unprecedented challenges, you have been steadfast in your commitment to the health and well-being of our students. Your professionalism, compassion and expertise have made a significant impact on our school community. And I am immensely grateful for all that you do. Your tireless efforts to provide quality healthcare services, whether it's. whether it's administering medications, conducting health screenings, or offering support and guidance to students and families, they have not gone unnoticed. Your presence brings a sense of security and reassurance to our school environment, knowing that our students are incapable and caring hands. Your dedication to promoting health and safety extends beyond the walls of our schools. You have played a crucial role in educating our community about preventative measures, promoting healthy habits, and ensuring that everyone has access to the resources they need to stay healthy. On behalf of the entire Prosser School District, I want to extend my deepest gratitude for your exemplary service. Your contributions make a difference each and every day, and I'm proud to have you as an integral members of our team. Thank you for your unwavering commitment to the health and well-being of our school. Your dedication is truly appreciated and valued. So for our directors who are here and our nurses, boy, I don't know, we can't do it without everybody. It does take a village.
Thank you. All right, next we'll move on to executive session. So pursuant to R C W forty-two thirty-one hundred one G superintendent evaluation is to evaluate the qualification of applicant for public employment or to review the performance of a public employee. However, subject to R C W forty-two thirty-one forty-four discussion by governing body of salaries, wages, and other conditions of employment to be generally applied within the agency shall occur in a meeting open to the public. And when a governing body elects to take final action, hiring setting salary of an individual employee or class of employees or discharging or disciplining an employee, that action shall be taken in a meeting open to the public and no action will be taken. Next would be R C W forty-two thirty-one hundred one H. Uh, let's see, decision of student board representatives twenty-four twenty-five appointment. Superintendent Kim Casey will be present for that one. And it is to evaluate the qualifications of a candidate for appointment to elect, elected office. However, interview any interview of such candidate and final action appointing a candidate to elective office shall be in a meeting open to the public. And we will recess this meeting till seven seven oh seven, is that right? Yeah, fifteen minutes.
And also.
And you guys, Blake? All right, we'll reconvene the regular meeting at seven fourteen. I just want to thank Alexander, Kami, and Yoshimi for coming here tonight and interviewing. And I would move to nominate all three of you. Motion and seconding? Any comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. So thank you very much.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard. Good opportunity.
I'll be in touch. Selena and my administrative assistant Selena Swearingen and Dorai will be in touch with you with your next steps.
I have a band bracelet.
Okay, thank you, Yoshimi. All right, we'll move on to, oh shoot, she just, yeah, student representative. Noah?
Honestly, for the final time, I have nothing to say.
Perfect. You're that close, right?
Yeah, um, yeah, like.
No closing words?
Oh, too many, but not stay here.
We'll see if
he caught it.
Caitlin caught her or not? No, I guess not. Caitlin?
Okay, I saw a little bit on sports. Pac has state tomorrow. Golf has had state earlier this week. And the rest of spring sports, which includes tennis, softball, and baseball, finish strong.
Thank you. Was she coming back?
She was supposed to send a picture.
Oh.
I will tell you, on her behalf, she and Andy Howe and I met in the parking lot. Because remember our concern about student safety walking across. And we actually stood there and walked, we walked the whole parking lot. And we have tentatively come up with agreement that the issue is really about speed. And so we're gonna put in six speed bumps at each of the islands to slow the traffic down.
Oh.
And then we also talked about when you're pulling, well, doesn't matter if you're driving up the curve and pulling in, or if you're out there and trying to turn down. If you, I actually drove it, so she wanted me to drive it, so I drove it. And when you're in the student parking lot and turning to drive down the hill, it, that is straight, and then you turn into this curve and you have to go out into that other lane to come down. So Andy's gonna look at getting a a quote and estimate to change that curvature so that you don't have to go so far out before you come down. But speed bumps are on their way.
Right?
Yes.
Real quick, I know Yoshimi is working on an activities fair, club fair, to bring up our incoming freshmen from the middle school that is not this Friday, but next Friday during our school day. And then we're always met up to our current students as well to try and really publicize our clubs and activities and shoes. But a ton of work on that, but a great example of what a progress student.
Great. Thank you. Can you get the picture?
Yeah. And so our A S B report is that the club fair planning is going well. Senior shirts are available, available for pickup once they're paid in miss, or paid in the office, and they will be able to commit grown adults for the pickup. Most of our club budgets have been turned in for next year and elections for next year have concluded.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? Moving on to discussion items, school building reports, which is Jackson, you're up first.
Get it. Why do you need to tiger out? Well, there's been a lot of great things this year, from Howl Middle School all the way to the high school. So I'm gonna start with Howl real quick. Do I got three minutes for this or?
Yeah.
Better get going. So I gave everybody a sheet of kind of some numbers that came up, so participation numbers for Howl and the high school as well. And then just at the very end of it, some highlights that I thought were kind of cool to share with everybody here. I'll kind of go through Howl. So our fall participation numbers, we had a hundred and twenty athletes out. Winter sports, we had eighty-five out. And then winter two, we have eighty out. And then also this past spring, we had a hundred and twenty-five athletes out. So grand total of four hundred and eighteen kids participating in sports this year at the middle school. So that's super cool to see. I know those numbers definitely jumped up because we added some C teams. And I know a lot of our middle school coaches go from season to season to season. So it's really cool to see a lot of our teachers and outside community members step up and give a lot of our kids opportunities to participate in sports. So I just want to give a huge shout out to our middle school coaches because they got six weeks of chaos and then the next six weeks, and they handle it with graciousness and patience. And I just want to give them a shout out. And then moving on to high school sports. I know it's not official yet, but I know the school board pending approval for a athletic trainer. I know, speaking to some coaches, it's a huge deal to not only our athletic program, but our community, but also the C WAC as a whole. This will be the first upcoming year that every single C WAC school will have an athletic trainer on site. And so it's, and that includes Quincy as well, because they're coming into our league and also Top National as well. So that's one of my huge highlights that I'm really thankful about. And hopefully it gets school board approved. And then some fall sport, sport and participation numbers for the high school. We had two hundred and nine athletes this past fall. And this past winter, we had a hundred and twenty-six athletes. And then this spring, we had three hundred and thirty-four athletes for a grand total of six hundred and ninety-nine student athletes out. And kind of go back to the fall numbers. It's kind of detailed of how many kids first scored, as well as who qualified for districts and state. And looking at those numbers, we had a lot of successful teams this past fall, winter, and spring. Almost every single program this past fall qualified for districts. We had a lot of our teams participate in state. And a huge highlight to me is that we had an all academic state team, our boys swim team. That's a huge thing to me. We had sixty-nine athletes that were all on the C WAC all conference team, which is more than, we had the top half of the C WAC for most participating athletes being nominated for C WAC. And then we had a C WAC scholarship winner, Corey McClure. We had a player of the year, Toby McClure. And then we had two coaches of the year, our volleyball head coach Taylor Munoz, and then also our girls track coach Cory. And that's kind of the highlights that happened this year. Any questions?
It looks good. Thank you, Jackson.
Well.
Just our time, yeah.
Go tap out.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Eric LaRaz, Mike.
Evening. So I'm extremely happy to report that we currently have forty-three graduating seniors in the migrant education program. We'll be celebrating on May thirty-first. I believe each of you received that invitation already. Have not, let me know if it's up to them, honey, down. It'd be absolutely amazing if you could be there to participate and share the joy of this kind of final step for our high school graduates and then move on. And we have some great guest speakers lined up who are from Prosser, one of them's from Prosser. And the other one definitely has lived the life of migrant lifestyle, but still has found a lot of success. So those are the kinds of examples we want to put forward for our students to provide encouragement and also allow them to set goals and move forward. On the bilingual side of things, I'm excited to announce that next year we'll be starting a program called Elevation. This program will help us with compliance, but more importantly, it's gonna allow us to have data at our fingertips to help our understanding of all students in the district, not just bilingual. The company has been gracious enough to allow us to put all of our students in it at only the cost of bilingual population. So a great benefit to the district as a whole, super excited about that. In addition, there are professional development components within the software that'll be at the fingertips of the teachers. So if there are students in their classroom that they need to provide specific strategies for at their fingertips, they'll have all that. They'll also have all their student data in there. So it'll be a comprehensive tool that will help them improve their instruction. Kind of where we're at right now. And though the last thing is we are working on our M E P summer enrichment program. So that'll run from June tenth through June twenty-seventh of the end of the month. But our credit retrieval will last through August first. Kids need a little bit more time to finish this course. They're not even, are there any questions I can answer for you?
I just wanted to tell you when I was at the superintendent's conference, elevation is the talk. Um, they were, they went to a bigger sponsor within Wassa. Trainings, things that you talk, all the things you're talking about when we met. We, was a talks amongst many school districts. So I'm really glad you brought that forward.
Any questions?
The senior, the senior nights at Howl, right?
Uh, no, just to direct.
Oh, it's here this year? Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Have a good night. All right, moving on to action items. Proclamation Staff Sergeant Best Remembrance Day.
I'd make the motion to approve proclamation for Staff Sergeant Best Remembrance Day.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Caitlin? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. And I'd like to read this. So Staff Sergeant Marvin L. Best Remembrance Day. Whereas Staff Sergeant Marvin L. Best graduated from Prosser High School in the class of nineteen eighty-nine. And whereas Staff Sergeant Best served honorably in the United States Marine Corps. And whereas Staff Sergeant Best served as a sniper with the United States Marine Corps in Fallujah, Iraq as part of Operation Iraqi Freedom. And whereas on June twentieth, two thousand and four, Staff Sergeant Best made the ultimate sacrifice to protect and defend the United States and was killed in action in hostile combat. And whereas the community of Prosser and the patrons of the Prosser School District are indebted to the honor, courage, and duty of Staff Sergeant Best. Now, now therefore, we hereby proclaim June twentieth each year to be Staff Sergeant Marvin L. Best Remembrance Day. Thank you. Moving on to class of twenty twenty-four senior luncheon.
Do you want me to like say anything or give you any extra information?
Do you have anything you? Do you want to add?
Have in front of you. It's, we are planning the senior luncheon.
Senior luncheon for the Thursday before graduation. So that's June sixth. They will do, the seniors will do their their practice, the moving up assembly, and then they will go do the graduation walk through all the elementary schools. And then when they finish that, they'll come to the Princess Theater for videos and social time. And then the luncheon and ready and out is going to cater the luncheon pending your approval. And then they'll ride the bus back to the high school after all the festivities are done.
Any other questions? Move to approve the twenty twenty-four senior luncheon for the Princess Theater and ready and out as the caterer.
Second.
We moved in second. Me, Caitlin? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Next up is the Agile Mind License Agreement.
So Agile Mind and the mathematics is a curriculum we use at Prosser High School. We've been using it for several years. But it is student license it and teacher licenses for the curriculum use. So it's about forty dollars a student per year. So this is just our yearly agreement to, to make sure we have access to the materials for the kids for next year.
And this was implemented in twenty twenty? That's the start of nineteen, nineteen twenty?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's been about five years.
Any questions for Deanna?
We no longer have the grant support?
No. No, so we, we've done a little bit of paring down of services. The grant was for about the first four years and paid for a lot of it. We always had some fee that we were paying ourselves, but no, we, we're, we pay for it now.
Is that new this year? So it's a new?
No, we did last year too.
What exactly is it?
It's their math curriculum. So it's the student license and the teacher license to the online materials. So the teachers use Canvas. The students can access their assignments and all of that. It's online, the book's online. We do have paper copies of the books due for students who prefer that, but kids do their work in notebooks, but they submit in Canvas.
So this is the actual curriculum?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's licensed is because it's online.
When Kim was here with the math team, she's a toy. I really showed my age. We're a few, a few years apart, but had Mr. Yatter together in high school. And I said, everybody that had Mr. Yatter in Prosser that certain period, every day you would walk in the class and he would say, get out your half a piece of paper, state improved Pythagorean theorem. And so I said, so do you, your kids still do that? Do you carry that on? And she's like, my kids don't have paper. She's like, it's all, it's all online. If I asked them for a piece of paper, they would look at me like I was crazy. I'm like, I.
So we have some, yeah, we have some additional programs that we use because of the college and the high school courses that are this curriculum. But yeah, that's, a lot of times have changed.
Why they can do it in their heads.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I would approve the Agile Mind license agreement.
I'm seconding. It's been moved in second in. Caitlin? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next up is the Washington State University Department of Human Development Field Place, Field Placement Internship Agreement.
So this, I think this might be the first time this is a title that we've had, but this is actually for a social work student to be able to work in our district. Um, hiring Maria Ella. Last school year, um, because she's, um, certified experience, she's able to host students. So next year we will have part-time social workers in all three elementaries because of our. We've had two this year too, that have been able to work with students in the elementary that don't cost us anything. They're doing their internship and they can do, um, the activities they can do under her supervision. So, yeah, she's, that's been a great addition to the district.
And I think it's said in the contract, it's no cost, right?
Yeah, no, that, it's just like a student teaching agreement.
Okay.
Yeah.
One move to approve the Washington State University Department of Human Development Field Placement Internship Agreement. It's been moved in seconded, Caitlin? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, moving on to vouchers. Any questions on the vouchers? It had, well, it did have one. It's maybe more of a comment than a question. I might be able to, but under micro, it says we've got Ruckus P H S Field Wireless.
Micro, micro.
It's nine oh nine three six six. I was just curious what that means. Oh, gotcha. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, I was curious on the Springbrook Farms, uh, check number nine zero nine three nine zero.
Um, so that, we get all, that's our, um, food services. We get all of our fresh food and that's actually, we get supply chain assistance to grab money for that.
Gotcha.
They're big bills.
I just, I had, I guess I didn't, hadn't come across the Springbrook Farms one before, but. Thought maybe you're going farm to table or something.
Well, hopefully.
Talk about that a little bit.
What's the nine oh nine three seven two O S B I Child, Child Nutrition Service?
Um, so we, we pay O S B I a fee, um, for their child nutrition services or food services. Director works directly with them.
What's it, what do we get?
Uh, guidance. So it's basically like, like for me, like WASBO, like Washington Associated School of Business Officials. It's, it's like that for our food services department. So they provide guidance, we do all of our reporting through them, um, and they provide support and training.
Is that an annual thing or?
Um, I think it's, I, I've several times a year. I'll have to, I'll get an exact answer for you on that one.
Well, move to approve vouchers. Been moved in seconded. Caitlin, you got any questions? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next up is Iowa State Travel Request for the National Hist, National History Day to the University of Maryland.
A little bit about this, if you guys would like me to. Not sure how many questions I can answer. Uh, we have three students, uh, two students that qualify, one is an orphaned. And, uh, both that's between the middle school and the high school. We have an advisor in Mr., uh, Dean Smith and Mrs. Kyla Smith. And both, one at the middle school, one at the high school that would be accompanying them on this trip. Um, again, we have a really good N H D program. We are hosting next year. We're excited about this trip. Excited for the opportunity to get kids out to the national conference and this is what that is. So, um, we're asking for permission to go.
One question, um, it looks like it starts June ninth. Is that cutting it a little close to get everything put together in time?
It is. It is cutting it very close. Um, they don't open the, Kyla and Dean have worked very hard in the background on this, really hoping to get this approved. I know they're sitting and waiting on pins and needles. Um, price to, you know, the price of tickets goes up every day, but they had to get the registration is the very first thing that needs to come up, so. Yeah, and hotel rooms, yeah.
Reserve their hotel room, so we've done some work ahead because.
Otherwise, it would have been too close.
Competition is so late and then you, they could have probably been on one board meeting earlier. I don't know if they would have met the timeline, but it's, it's tight.
It is tight. I feel like we went through this last year too. Um, just the timelines are, are really tight anyway, but again, if it does not get approved, we can still cancel and get all of our money back, so.
It's in tight meeting there for the National History Night.
That's correct.
Cause we got a valedictorian that qualifies.
That's correct.
Graduation in to the airport.
That's correct, yes.
I would make a motion to approve that as a travel request for National History Day.
I'll second that.
Been moved in seconded, Caitlin? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If that's it for action items, moving on to consent items, one through four. It's been moved in seconded, Caitlin? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. That concludes that port on to that part. Moving on to reports. Delise.
Okay, so I have student enrollment. Uh, we are sitting very steady. Um, you will see that we're down about one point four F T E. Uh, but that's not due to losing any students, um, our enrollment withdrawals, um, wash. Due to, um, scheduling changes at the high school. Um, and we do have some good news about enrollment for next year. Um, all of our eighteen slots for TK have been built. Um, so we have a waitlist on that one. Um, so we'll have in addition to our thirty-five or thirty-six right now, we'll have eighteen more.
Um, I'm gonna add to your good news. Um, the reason this is also really good, remember we talked about kindergarten readiness? This is a part of that kindergarten readiness. Okay, so I just, you know.
That's awesome.
Did you say there's also a waitlist?
Mm-hmm, yes. And we work together with E cap, which is the E S D program, so we do one interest survey out and then kind of, you know. Have to make decisions on where students go. They tend to keep the students, they had us three-year-olds rolling into four-year-olds. And then we are working to pick, you know, select the students that have the most challenges. Uh, we are gonna have all the positions filled right now. We're enrolling about fifteen per class. Because we have to kind of hold for some students that might be in more need, that might be coming closer to the time school starts, but they will all be full.
What is the, uh, where, where are they going to be located? Do we have a?
Two at River View and still one, we have one that we're trying to want to review now.
Oh, so what?
Jesse's moving some people around because she knows she, how, she sees the benefits. So she's like, making it happen. So we're gonna find, we're find space and use our shoelace and pop another one in.
Any other questions for Delise? Thank you, Delise. Deanna?
Uh, a few things. Um, I did have our last science adoption meeting for six through twelve for the fall. Last week, um, we were able to really drill down into some curriculum, see some promising ones. But we're gonna restart in the fall with a goal of selecting some that we might, that we will pilot at least a unit of, from different curriculums that we have interest in next school year for adoption, for that selection and adoption at the end of next year. Um, working with Architects West and the E S D to apply for a preschool, like early learning grant to expand facilities. Um, Architects West designing is to use, there's a, a space about four thousand square feet of the Boys and Girls Club that they are not developing because they don't need all of that space. So we're hoping we can get a grant and we can use what the improvements Boys and Girls Clubs are doing to count as the match. So that we can build two, two or three classrooms in that space. So they're not just into old classrooms at old P H S, which works. But it would be more designed for kids that age with bathrooms in the classroom and all those things that are important for three, four-year-olds. And, and three-year-olds when going down the hallway to the bathroom isn't always possible. Um, we're a M T S S, I've talked to you about that, multi-tiered system of supports. That's a system where we are looking at. Um, it's tiers in our tier one is, the things that we provide for all students, both academically and socially. Tier two might be some kids might either have some struggles academic or socially and need some extra supports. And tier three might go all the way as high as like special education services. So we've been working on our district system. Um, the committee has worked several times with, um, Kelly Bolson from E S D one, two, three. We're going to do, we'll do a, a short presentation for you in August. They can, we had our last training this week. Um, and so, and then I'm gonna be out. So we'll do a presentation for you guys in August to give you a little more information on M T S S. And then, interesting, you mentioned farm to table, but this is called farm to school. Um, there's a grant that our, um, nurse, Laura Montanero, one of our nurses worked with Kathleen Modell. Um, so they're working with, uh, to, uh, produce, have a project where we produce some of our own food for our cafeterias. Um, we're starting this summer. We have, they're planting tomatoes and cucumbers, um, that will be served during the summer food program. And then if there's, once summer food program is over and there's still things growing, they're gonna donate that to our food pantry. So the program, uh, found some success. There was a, a, a high school that kind of built an alternative school around a farm concept. And they had really great success taking students who might have traditionally been kind of alternative school students, struggling, not earning credits, not wanting to attend school. Um, and they've had really good data, uh, where you take kids who might, um, not be wanting to be at school. And having this responsibility and this project brings them to school. They have really good data where the kids that, um, in, in the program went from like a thirty-nine percent graduation rate to an eighty-eight percent graduation rate with a sixty-nine percent of them going on into college. So it's not just to produce the food, it's kids are gonna be involved. There, we're going to use, this is gonna be planted over, um, at the old high school. Um, and right now, we're gonna do some partnering with Boys and Girls Club because the kids, um, from middle school and high school are there. And then next year, all of the kids will be there once the new Boys and Girls Club opens. So, um, we're just, we're starting small. Uh, there's a, a retreat that's gonna happen this summer. I can't attend because I will be recovering, but Kim's going to go as our district, as a district administrator in July into Oregon. And, um, yeah, there's only about twelve districts that were selected, so they're excited about it.
Any questions for Deanna?
Down the road there. Deanna, I actually had a question that I probably should have asked when we were talking about this, um, Agile Minds.
Yes.
Curriculum?
Yes.
I thought I saw Algebra One on that list. So is that also gonna be the Algebra One curriculum at Housel?
So the middle school's gonna use, so the middle school uses a lot of sort of math. And they're going for this coming year, going to use a lot of sort of math, Algebra One. I think it'll give us a good, um, comparison, uh, opportunity between the two curriculum. Successes students, but understanding that kids, when they come to high school, everyone's taking Algebra One. The middle school will be a, a group of students that have, you know, shown through their data that they're ready for Algebra One. So that's their plan. That's the curriculum they currently use. That's what their teachers are trained on. So changing, going to a different one. This, we think this is gonna work better. Same standards, different, a little bit different approach.
And that's kind of where we're heading, right? We would like to try and get way more Algebra One into the eighth grade so that we can have the four years here. So those are pieces that we're working on.
And our math classes, I worked with Brian and, um, we worked on master schedule and classes and his teachers made choices. But Algebra One, Geometry Algebra Two, Precalc, Calc A, Calc B, Statistics. The list of math goes on. Yes, it did. So continuing to grow. We're excited.
We've been here a long time. You've got this in front of you, so I'm just gonna give you some highlights. Um, I, um, we have one of our partners here, but I went to the Jubilee Ministries Prosser Community Volunteers Lunch today. Um, it's just some amazing work that our students are doing and stuff that's going on in the community. We're gonna continue to partnership with that. Uh, special thank you out and out to Rotary. I'll go to Rotary tomorrow, but the district track and all of that was great. Communication, the appreciation. Winnie the Pooh at the Princess Theater, put it on your calendar. Um, buy your tickets online. So if you wanna, it's, um, Winnie the Pooh Student Edition. And every student says something. So I want you to know, if you can only imagine forty students. Approximately forty to forty-four students doing Winnie the Pooh, all first grade, all on the stage at the same time.
And getting all their cues.
And getting all their cues and doing whatever. So, um, I'm, we're super excited. Year-end events, each building has a lot going on. It sounds crazy, but the best way to follow it is go to each building's, um, Facebook page. And you can find all the things that are going on. The list, if we made a list, it's like this long, but we got field trips and all kinds of stuff. Um, student board members, I talked about the, uh. Crosswalks and speed bumps, uh, and the square corner. Uh, thank you and best wishes to Caitlin and Noah. Uh, no legal things going on right at the moment. Upward and onward with old P H S. Um, super exciting. Um, the carpet is in, the trim is in, the paint is done. Room one nineteen and one twenty are, 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 uh, woo. Our, our tech rooms. Um, so we put an office in for Sean, so she'll have a private office and then her staff will be inside there. And then they have a tech workroom and a storage room. Um, it's just gonna be really great. Um, if you've driven by, you saw the grass was all tore up for a while, the underground sprinklers supposedly are supposed to start tomorrow, we'll see. Um, but we got the sprinklers going on. We're working on pressure washing and painting, some planting and so forth. So, um, it'll hang on for the ride. Um, so it's really going well. We do have some, talked to different people about this. There's some air conditioning stuff, the typical wiring in an old building, phase two versus phase three and air conditioning units. And so that's going on. Um, we starting our weekly capital levy meetings with Architects West in Wenaha. They start, they'll be on Thursdays in the afternoons. We're getting some documents ready to go out to bid for the, uh, ADA ramp. Um, working on the Housel Middle School quote, the stuff, so all the bid stuff is getting ready to go. Um, cause we gotta hit the deadline to have some asphalt before the fall. Uh, leadership, um, I just want to acknowledge my staffing correction and public meeting as well as one out on social media. Um, I talked to a couple of members here tonight and some different people. Um, when a leader, um, is in a public forum and you're doing what you think is best, as I said in my public announcement. And it turns out that it's not the best, you own it. And so I owned that and we're stepping back and keeping everybody where they're at for twenty-four, twenty-five. We are gonna make some changes for twenty-five, twenty-six, but parents and, um. Different union members and everybody's gonna be at the table to make sure we're doing what's best for the students and our community. Um, I attended the Tri-Tech Quarterly Superintendent Meeting. I know that, uh, Rick is in dealing with F F A this evening. But you would have really been proud of some of the work that, that you've got your big three, right? Richland Pasco. Uh, Kennewick, and they're talking about all the things and then Rick starts talking and showing and, um, our little bitty professor kind of held our own in that superintendent meeting. So that was, uh, if you don't want to know, I'm a little competitive, so I kind of like that. Um, we're deep into our bargaining with the P E A, which is our teachers association. We're moving along quite nicely together. I would, I think that's a fair public comment. Uh, fiscal, we've received notification that our insurance with U S I P. Um, or clear risk, depending on how you talk about it, could go up as much as thirty percent against, again this year. A total cost for, um, I really want people to understand that for twenty-three, twenty-four, now this is all of our. A total cost for, um I really want people to understand that for twenty-three, twenty-four, now this is all of our insurance except L and I. Is about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for our school district. And it's going to potentially go as high as eight hundred and forty-five thousand for our insurance, that's everything from buildings and liability and the whole insurance thing, so. And when you start. Shopping insurance, right, if your car insurance goes up and you make a phone call and you do everybody shopping, you say this is my driving record, this whatever. In the state of Washington, there are only two business establishment or two. Systems, options for school insurance, um so it's not like you can shop around really, it's kind of the old Ma Bell days, depending on your um age in the room. We're gonna have an M SOC budget meeting tomorrow and so there'll be some more discussion, maintenance, um talks about our budget, um. The district, for anyone listening, the district is open on Friday, um maintenance, things like that, but it is a unused no day. Um, so our staff has, our teaching staff have a four-day weekend and graduation on Saturday. Oh, not this Saturday. The unit, sorry about that. Yeah, I definitely come out where somebody's like, why am I ready for graduation?
Great, uh any questions for Kim?
Thank you.
You, thank you. Okay, moving on to board reports, Michelle?
Well, it looks like I have a lot of things to put on my calendar. More like six more just since I got here, but it's very cool, um. Well, we, most of us, not you Jason, but the rest of us all went to the. Lost a regional uh meeting on Monday, which I thought was really good. Um, had a little training session on from, it's called From Conflict to Conversation, so just um good reminders about. You know, how to treat people with dignity in your conversations and um. You know, prevent arguments, things from getting heated in board meetings, so um really great training, I thought. Yeah, there wasn't a lot of people there, but um we had pretty good representation from our district, yeah.
Good, yeah, I'm sorry I missed that. Okay, I am, I really am, I wanted to go.
I'll give you my note.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, I think, I think Monday was good, just um, you know. Take home some stuff out of the meeting, but just, just being kind of outside the board room with, with everybody, I think was kind of a nice change too, to just kind of hang out and. Conversation on the way there and the way back, um, you know, nothing in depth, it was just like conversation, I think that was good.
About triathlons?
Yeah, about triathlons, um.
Him gets recognized on the highway.
Yes. Um, I do, I do want to uh congratulate our girls' track team, um league champs. This year, which I believe is the first time since nineteen eighty-nine. Um, so it's been a long time, but yes, that was with a, an Olympic athlete on the roster at that point in time, so. Um, and Boys and Girls Track going on currently, so wish them all the best.
Yeah, I thought the great district track meet, it was awesome, the, the uh great national anthem, great job. Being a former jumper player and loved it. Um, but yeah, state is, is, starts tomorrow, I'm, have to go, sun's gonna be running, so.
Where's it at?
It's in uh, it's, it's at um.
At home.
Oh, Tohoma High School, yes, that's.
In a stadium that's like your college.
It's really nice.
Maple Valley, is that where that is, Tohoma High School?
Yeah, Tohoma High School, yes.
It's there.
So.
It's a nice facility.
Built it after I moved.
There you go, uh, yes.
Okay.
No, that's all I got.
I enjoy the director training as well. Uh, I really enjoyed the National History Night at the Princess Theater and want to think, there was a donor that paid for the rental of the space, but the Princess staff that was there donated their time to be there that evening. Um, the presentations were what, you know, what we saw as a board and then more, and it's just, you know, incredible what I think these students do. Um, and then I got a sneak peek for everybody there, got a sneak peek of the Winnie the Pooh set, because it was up and it's. So nice and well done and I, you know, again, like Camille Klingel and Louis Long and other community members. All volunteered to get this done for um the kids in our community are, we had, the whole high school marching band is some kids from the middle school, we're in the Lila Parade last Saturday. In Spokane and you, they even showed it on TV and it was a great job, great job.
Great, thank you. Um, I don't have much to say since I missed the meeting on Monday. I'll get all the notes from that, um. So with that, our future meetings, we do have a special meeting uh tomorrow uh to talk about budget uh right here in the library workroom at six P M. Um, another meeting June fourth with, which will be a special board meeting uh concerning the budget. Um, here at the library workroom and then a regular board meeting June twelfth, again, right here at the regular. Or at the library workroom, with that, this meeting's eternal, thank you.
I think I got to sit back next to your wife today, I got to meet her.
She could, she got to meet you.
Yeah.
And Caitlin, you're done, right? Unless you want to come on the twelfth, I mean, you you'll be graduated and. Next life, so.